I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is there anyone else recording this meeting? If you please join me in the pledge.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to move ahead to, oh, actually citizens comments. Seeing none, we will move ahead to student representatives' report.
All right, well, as all you know, graduation was on June 6th. I know everyone was crying, students, the teachers, the parents, everyone's crying, so it was a good night. Also, the Relay for Life happened on last Friday, June 13th. It went from nine to four inside the high school because it was rained out, but it was still a huge success. We had a lot of support, a lot of people came. And students that are still in the high school are currently taking their finals and their last day is Monday.
Very nice.
Do you know how much they raised from Relay?
I actually don't know.
My understanding is they raised $37,000.
Yeah.
Wow, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Especially when they cut it down by five hours and it was inside. So that was impressive.
Excellent.
Just a quick comment. Fortunately, I was able to attend that and I have to say, I mean, you have to imagine all these kids in the school and what a great job, not just the staff, you guys did coordinating everything and the activities were fantastic. Even though it was shortened and obviously the kids were a little disappointed, they had a great time and you could feel it. I mean, it was really an energizing day and I hope it continues and really your class, your group did a phenomenal job helping guide that day.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments? We now move on to special recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as you know, tonight is Nicole's last official meeting with us. She's done a great job. Kyle is unable to be here. He's continuing playing baseball. Is it through Legion or one of the teams?
Yeah.
But Nicole is attending UMass Amherst. I had the pleasure of going to the Rotary Scholarship Dinner last night. She was there with her dad, being honored. So, we thought that we would recognize you tonight with a little cake and wish you well. Mrs. Scobie has a certificate for you.
Oh, thank you.
Would you like to come on up, Nicole? That way you could shake hands with all of us and we can thank you for your time.
Sure.
Sure. That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You've been an excellent student representative, always showing up with a smile full of information and we've loved having you. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. I knew Nicole when she was very, very little, very, very young.
Thank you.
I told you.
I just want to thank you for everything you've done and you really brought up the school committee more with the things you bring into us and taught us what's going on too. You helped us out a lot and keep up the good work.
Best of luck with your future plans.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Yeah, good luck next year in school.
Real quick comment to show you. Our student representatives, every year that I've been on the committee, have been fantastic. And last night, we were able to speak with one that was at an event we were at last night and had to believe that she has graduated from college and is still taking the leadership role. So, I really think you stepping up and doing this is the beginning of you continuing to basically represent people in your class and you did a phenomenal job this year.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Just good luck next year.
Thanks.
That'd be great. Sure. I'll have more.
Nicole, when the cake is finished, feel free to get an early dismissal.
And our guests have cake tonight, too.
Thank you.
You certainly put in your time, so don't feel like you need to hang around for the whole meeting.
I can take it to go if you'd like.
Oh, no, you can't leave.
Thank you.
And we need our audience on that cable.
There you go.
I think we should sell it to the audience.
The heck away to get it, go, somebody leaving.
I'm sure you'll do excellent at college.
No one's allergic to chocolate.
No, it's out there.
Nicole's going to do great things. Continue to do great things.
And make sure you come back and let us know.
Yeah, we should do that.
Do we need more?
Even if it's just shooting a email and she could pass along the information for us. But we'd like to hear how you're doing.
You gotta surprise us and show up someday.
Yeah.
Now, were you just on it for the one year or was it more than one year that you did this?
Uh, no, I just did it senior year.
Just senior year.
Great job.
Very good.
And you can tell Kyle that he's in trouble for not being here.
All right. He already missed out on his free week, so it's his loss.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving right along, let's seek approval for the minutes of the June 4th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have an attendance with us tonight, Mr. Michael Young. He is a math teacher from Auburn High School and he is seeking your approval to attend a ski and snowboard trip that has now become an annual event up in Killington. Would not actually take place until next March, but obviously plans need to be made. So, with your approval, I will turn it over to Mr. Young and he can give a brief update and then we'll seek your approval of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm just seeking approval. Last year, we went to Sunday River in Maine and we brought about 42 students and we had a very successful trip. All the kids loved it, so we're going to try it again this year. This year, we're going to Killington in Vermont. The price per student is about $335. It'll be totally student-funded this year. It's been requested by a lot of the students to try to do some fundraising, to try to reduce some of their costs, so we'll work on that in the fall. What about that? It'll be March 6th. We'll leave Friday after school, so we won't miss any school. We will leave about 3:00 PM, return about 8:00, 8:30 on Sunday evening, so we'll be back in school on Monday.
Okay.
I think I've given a proposal today with all of your information.
Yes, very good.
Yep, absolutely. Very well stated. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the AHS Ski Club Field Trip to Killington Ski Resort in Killington, Vermont on March, in March of 2015.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's your names.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have fun.
Thank you.
I hope so.
Be safe.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing.
The next item, I wanted to make you aware, as you know, the We the People Group, of which Nicole and Kyle were part, Representative Frost is working with Mr. Bonaccio and Mr. Kennard to have a highway sign on, 290 erected on this. So, I just wanted to keep you apprised, I don't have any further update from that, but I think it would be a nice honor and distinction and well-deserved by the students since they did represent all of Massachusetts, so I will keep you updated.
Excellent. That would be excellent.
Next, we have Mr. Fahey here to give an update briefly regarding schools and fields and summer projects. There is an awful lot that is going on, so he'll give you a couple of brief highlights about that.
Hi, good evening.
Good job.
I know you're having cake every meeting.
He wasn't.
As Dr. Bernal stated, it'll be a busy time once again. We'll be doing our group cake cleaning with all the studios, all the buildings, going from building to building each week. As I said before, get a professional set of eyes, not just one or two. We basically have 20 sets of eyes, you know, professionals cleaning the buildings. Along with that, we're going to be happy to report, as the last meeting, we, people approved the ignition project at the high school. That'll be going underway starting in July. Basically, the majority of the work is on the roofs, so it will not affect the summer school program at all. Quarry checks will be done, spot checks, safety meetings. We have an outstanding company, which is the company Lynch, is doing the construction. So, looking forward to this project, as I'm sure the students are, too. Next, we have at the high school.
One year later. I missed that. Yeah. One year.
You'll have to stay one more year just to get it.
Well, we could shut it off. We want that. And speaking of energy, as you know, we signed a contract with Guardian Energy to upgrade our lighting system as well. Parts are on order. They're slowly coming in now. The goal is to have those completed before the summer school starts July 14th. So, it's ongoing. And, you know, busy place, a lot going on at the middle school, doing a lot of painting. We've been having our custodians do it in-house, after hours. Basically, I have like four more classrooms to do for the ceilings and that part of the project will be done. We just received the playground equipment in the back for the, for the new elementary school that's going to be back there. The DPW did some excavating this past week. Credits got to go out the way in Bloomcrest. You know, it really puts us heart and soul into making sure the guys come, you know, it does an outstanding job. Really couldn't go without them. So, we have to report that equipment is in. They're anticipating to start that project the 30th with the hopes of having it done by the 4th of July, so. And with that, I'd like to call up Mr. Ringgad. He can talk about the middle school project.
Absolutely. Yep, we will, actually, we might have some questions for you, Joe.
I'd just like to ask you, how are you doing with all your fields and stuff like that, Joe? How's that going? Do you have any, like, major repairs you need done this year or are you pretty well off or?
Actually, we've had a pretty good year.
Did you?
No, no real problems at all, we report. As I said before, we've had a lot of seams replaced at the high school.
Right, yep.
240, it's in the back of my head. It's holding up true. Warranty has come into an end, but they're being maintained, maintained well. We haven't had an issue this year with baseball. They've kept it immaculate, which is a credit, I think, to the baseball program that we have, you know. It all trickles down.
Right, absolutely.
You know, the other groups see it, they want to do just as good a job. And you've seen that this year, you've seen the softball team actually go out and they purchase, you know, draggers, you know, they drag the infield themselves now. So, it's nice to see it work.
Absolutely, especially after you had all the problems with the seams and stuff and now you're moving forward and everything's going well. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from State?
Just a comment. And, you know, obviously, you do a fantastic job and I know you always, you know, give credit to your staff and everything else, but, I mean, they're in great shape and you're doing a great job and I just want to make sure, you know, with Gail and Jess here on the committee, you know, how valuable you are to the district and I really thank you. You're on top of everything. Buildings are looking good, especially our older ones that we're going to be taking offline. You haven't let them go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, you can have an extra piece of cake.
Joe, who's going to assemble the playground equipment?
The company that we purchased from Playground Equipment. They're the same company that actually installs all our playgrounds that we have in town, probably for the last 10 years.
And the DPW typically does the base work, or?
Well, actually, it's, in order to make this project go forward with the funds that we had, that, those were separate. We would actually have to contract that out.
Right.
So, we were able to, to get the best value of, to get the best price, we were able to work with the DPW, take, have them do the excavation portion of it, which saved us a lot of money. Now that, now the playground company comes in, DigSafe has already been notified, they come in, they place it, they set it, chips come in, we spread it, and we're good to go. So, again, it's the same company that, that we've had throughout the whole town for the last 10 years. In fact, the same company did the high school.
I'd like to publicly thank the DPW and ask that anytime they do any small chore for us, that you let us know, just send us a note, Mary Ellen, a note, just so we know, just so we can publicly thank them or if we happen to bump into them somewhere, thank them for the things that they help us out with. That's, yes, Joe?
And I think, you know, obviously, we have a great working relationship with the DPW and I would like even say one step further. At some point, just to look a letter or a phone call of appreciation, so they know, you know, that we really do appreciate the savings that they're realizing, the district and the town, by taking the time to work on these projects for our kids.
Absolutely. It's a great reciprocal relationship that we have, because we're all in this together, so if we can help them to save some money or they can help us, it really works great. And Joe does yeoman's work on helping to coordinate all of that.
And to a comment on that, there was many a times where you would assist us, too, on the town side.
Yeah.
I know I was a beneficiary of that on many occasions, so.
It's a great.
You know, it is, it is, just so we let the know, this is a great working relationship.
It is, one hand washes the other, but again, I give credit all to Wayne because he's a guy, you know, didn't even have his lunch the other day because, you know, the truck was coming and his worker, worker came down. It was, you know.
I think we miss those little things sometimes.
Normally, what we'd have to do is we'd have to hire a rigging company come in. That would be an added expense. So, through their expertise, they rigged it off themselves and it worked out well. So, it'll be, it'll be a beautiful playground once it's up and running. Looking forward to it.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
We will take the school building master plan team, but Mr. Ringgad finished his business, so he can get out of here, maybe catch a ride with Joe.
On your motorcycle?
Joe's taking him for ice cream. We don't have ice cream with that cake, he's just.
You can walk right over there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And the first part of the Swanson Road, as you know, the master plan team has been working with the renovations proposed for Swanson Road. The first half of that is now set and ready to go. Our schedule had always been to work with the different renovations in the building, possibilities in the building, and in the meantime, get the site work under control, the site work being the priority of the entire project. So, that being said, the site has been designed by Graze Engineering. It's permitted and approved by the planning board. We're ready to go. It was approved on the 10th of June and it's ready to go pending your approval. We put it out to bid. We had five bidders. They were all within about 6%, which is pretty good in the means that the plans are pretty good. The low bidder was JH Lynch at $737,500. A little bit more than we had initially thought based on the initial sketches that we gave of estimating back in the fall. But between that time and then once it was actually designed, we added quite a bit of things to it because of the, just because they had to be. There's an underground filtration system. We ended up having to take out the old septic system. We added a lighting, lighting system to the parking lot. And then when we went to the DCG, there were some gates and sidewalks added there, so. Anyway, with that said, we're confident now that we would like to ask that you approve the JH Lynch as the low bidder. And then what we will be doing over the next two or three months is looking at the, finalizing the work inside the building. And what we're going to do, we think, at this point, we think we're going to put it out as a base bid with an alternate for the general office area. Give us some room that if we get into a, you know, a budget crunch next fall, we'll have different ways to do it. And as Joe said, the painting is already being done in-house, which is saving an awful lot of money. So, by breaking this up into little parts, I think we're, you know, we should be fine. So, we anticipate we'll put it out to bid at the end of the year, which will give us six months before we even have to get in there. So, we have plenty of time to move on with. With that, if you would approve the.
Sounds like an excellent, excellent idea.
Award to JH Lynch, that would be great.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the bid from JH Lynch?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? No, I'd just like to thank you for your hard work, Mr. Ringgad.
You're welcome.
It's a thankless job, but I'm going to thank you and I understand what you're up against here. And I think it's excellent that you put enough thought into it to kind of break it up, so if we have to do some of the work ourselves to get us across the finish line, so be it.
Well, we're looking at that, you know. Joe, Joe certainly is capable and his people are capable of doing some of the work to do that. We may end up going back to the DPW, too. Who knows? You know, there are all kinds of possibilities that we'll try to do. But just by breaking it into smaller pieces, I think we avoid the big design costs to begin with and we'll go from there. We'll figure this out.
That's excellent. I can't thank you enough for the time they put into it.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
If I could just make one comment, I do want to echo Mr. Scobie's remarks and thank you, Mr. Ringgad, for all of your time and energy you put in. You're actually quite a team, as you know, and we sing Joe's praises as well deserved. He's doing things all the time, but Joe sits on the master plan team as well as school building committee, too, so thank you both very much.
It's a lot of fun, you know. We're able to just kind of work this, what happens at 9:00 doesn't always happen at 10:00. It's moving forward.
It is, definitely.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thanks for the cake.
Enjoy the ice cream, too.
Oh, she's leaving.
Sorry.
Goodbye, Nicole. Thank you.
Goodbye and good luck, Nicole.
Thank you.
Keep us updated into your progress.
I will.
The next end, wanted to make you aware, there's no urgency around this, but in consideration that you may at some point be closing or turning back to the town, Julia Bancroft and Mary Dee Stone Schools, once all of the shifts are made, there is a requirement through MSBA that we provide them notice on that of at least six months. We've been in touch with the representative, had discussions with them. There are forms to be completed, Mr. Gray and Mr. Fahey, you were part of those discussions. So, we're keeping you apprised and our plan is to start to gather that information this summer, share it with you preliminarily, and even before you make the firm decision, we'll just notify them so that we meet their six-month timeline with the understanding that you can pull back should you choose to do so. So, I just wanted you to know, we are aware of that and working on it.
There's no way we can have that set up enough so we can vote on it, so we?
Well, my recommendation.
I hate to vote on something that I don't, I don't have all the stuff I need to vote on it, but.
So, through the chair.
I hate rubber stamping things, that's how I say it, I guess.
So, I may not have communicated it correctly, because you won't be rubber stamping anything, but we'll only need to do is just complete paperwork to send to MSBA. Nothing's definite until the school committee takes its vote.
Okay.
So, we just need to notify them that there is the potential that we'll be closing schools. Basically, what the MSBA wants to know is, have they supported funding in a school within the last 10 or 20 or maybe even 50 years? There's a time limit. With the age of Mary Dee and JB, they're both almost 90 years old, MSBA has not supported any funding for those projects, so it's not going to be an issue. They just want to make sure that a community doesn't build a school, say there's a need, and then 20 years later say, we need another school, we're not going to use this one anymore. They want to make sure they're using their investment. So, you actually won't be voting until we know the new middle school's ready, the current middle school's ready, so you won't be taking any votes until all of that happens.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I suppose that would go with the accelerated repair program as well, if they gave you a couple hundred thousand dollars to put new windows in and then you're going to close the school now.
Same thing. Exactly, exactly, the same thing. I don't know if you want to take it out of order a little bit, because Mr. Fahey is staying for the accelerated repair. Do you want to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Move that up?
Sure.
So, if we turn it over to?
He's finally getting a rest.
Oh, you want to give him a cake?
Mary Ellen, he's finally getting a rest.
Yeah, I know. Mr. Gray's going to do a lot of talking, but it's a team collaborative effort, so I thought that he could feel good.
Paul, do you want me? Come join me, Joe. I know you like to stay outside.
Not budget.
In the back of your packet is information that deals with this, so you can see.
The first document I'll call your attention to is a letter that was received by the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, which is, basically outlines and welcomes the Auburn community as well as the Auburn School District to the first of many phases of the accelerated repair program for the MSBA. Within that letter, I think it's on page two, you'll find some benchmarks of some initial paperwork that needs to be completed as well as what the MSBA should be searching for. It's the, one address to.
It's on the reverse side of the sheet.
I say paper, I guess it's a habit that I do back-to-back so that we don't kill too many trees, so. One of the first benchmarks that the MSBA is requiring is for the district to identify any potential money that would be used for the improvements that we've asked for through the accelerated repair program, specifically the roof at Rindmar Elementary School, the roof at 10 Swanson Road, and the boiler at 10 Swanson Road. And part of what their requirement is, is just a, it's a requirement so that they can see that a town and the district actually have some financial ability to fund these projects as we move forward. And I will stress, and I'm sure you'll hear this throughout the whole accelerated program, this, the word accelerated to the state of Massachusetts means it'll be two or three years. That's accelerated to them. So, I know some people hear the word accelerated and they think within 90 days we'll have the roof starting to be worked on, but believe me, this is a very well-thought-out documented process where every step of the way would require both the town and the school committee to make a commitment to the next phase, being well-aware what that may require. So, as I said, the first benchmark is response to the MSBA that the school district has some ability, either through future or present capital improvement program monies, to fund the related projects that we have asked them to fund. So, what I have proposed and what I've given to Dr. Bernal, which you have in front of you, is a letter. It says draft, it's dated to Mr. McCarthy, who's the executive director of MSBA. And this is a proposal that we have put together, looking at what funds we currently have earmarked for certain projects in the past capital improvement programs, some of which, as you can see, were monies that were already designated for those programs, being the roofs and the boilers at the respective schools. What Mr. Fahey and I did was we went through and then we looked at other projects that may or may not require immediate funding that we could then send to the MSBA to say that if so moved by the town as well as the school committee and ultimately by the voters of the town of Auburn, that we would have funds available to fund these projects. The MSBA, as I said, the word accelerated is misleading, they do allow you between now and the end of 2015 to come up with funding mechanisms. So, in the worst-case scenario, you'll have at least three town meetings of which you could go before the voters to either ask to transfer these funds and/or appropriate additional funds if that is the will of the, of the school committee and ultimately the tax pay is here in Auburn. But at this point, we've gone through and we've identified current money that's already been funded for different projects and providing this to the MSBA as well as giving you the information so that you can see that we are certainly committed to following through on this process. On the back page, back pages, you'll see that what we did was, the way the MSBA project works is, once we send this letter saying that, yes, we have the ability to raise funds and/or already have committed funds, the MSBA will then assign to the town of Auburn a onus project manager. And within that process, they basically, and this is very true, they put the names in a hat and they will pull out someone in the area who is qualified, pre-qualified by the MSBA to provide these services. And they, the next phase that will be a requirement of the town and the school committee to vote on will be to fund that part of the process so that an onus project manager would come will be to fund that part of the process so that an onus project manager would come in. They would look at the three projects that we're recommending renovations for, and then they would complete a feasibility study. The, that part of the MSBA program requires that the district and the towns commit funds to pay for that onus project manager. Part, the first part of it is the OPM itself, which is an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. That's a cap that the MSBA puts on their project. The second part of it is a feasibility study, and that is conditional upon the size and the scope of the building, repairs and/or boilers that need to be replaced. So that is not a defined number, nor is it capped. What I did the other day was I spoke with our project coordinator, Kevin Sullivan, from the MSBA, and we looked at similar sized roofs and similar sized boilers that were recently completed as part of the 2013 accelerated repair program to gauge an approximate cost it would cost the district if we went forward into the next phase, which is the determination to award money or give money so that we can be awarded an onus project manager in a feasibility study. Likewise, Mr. Fahy has gone out and, once again, this is all, at this point, just our best guess. How much is a roof going to cost? How much is another roof at a smaller school going to cost? How much is a boiler going to cost? And that's where these amounts came from. These are our best estimates, but once again, to show the MSBA that we do have the potential to pay for these repairs as we move further down the road. So in conclusion, this letter is one that we would like you to review. It's one that we share with you because it is a requirement, as I said, the first benchmark, that we have to respond to the MSBA. There is no commitment. This by no means are the final funds that we have designated. As I've stated, this is just to let the MSBA know that we have the funds available if so approved by twenty, you know, by the end of 2015. And then, as you can see in the second page of that letter, there's a couple other benchmarks that are coming up shortly after the July deadline on this one, where, once again, this is all a very long process while accelerated. And so this is the first letter we have to send to the MSBA sometime between now and the July ninth deadline.
Just one item I'd like to add to. Thank you, Mr. Gray, for that. But, you know, as we went through and brought to town meeting for the repairs and updates to the Ten Swanson Road property and Mr. Ringardt actually presented in May, the commitment has really been to stay within previously appropriated funds, that one point eight million dollars, and we're hopeful that we're going to be able to do that, and that is certainly our goal. This document here as a draft, we'd propose that we send this into MSBA. It's due to them by July ninth. Our next meeting is not until July ninth. So we'd like to send this to them with the understanding that we don't have to appropriate any of this until December of 2015. Now, assuming we could do this, it would require us to put off some projects that we had previously designed, determine that were needed. However, we'd do that because we could save the town half of the class of these. So to put a roof, just to use round numbers, and I, using a estimate, to put on a new roof at the Ten Swanson Road, the current Auburn Middle School, could be a million dollars. So if we can reappropriate funds already approved and not ask for additional money, and we can save the town five hundred thousand dollars for a repair that ultimately is going to need to be made, I think Mr. Fahy has said it's actually outlived its life expectancy now. Same thing with the Bryn Mawr roof. If we can, if it's a five hundred thousand dollar roof and the MSBA can contribute half of that, two hundred and fifty thousand, it's worth it for us to do that. So ultimately, it would require school committee to propose warrant articles for approval at town meeting to reappropriate funds. But my strong belief would be that town meeting would support that because of the end result of saving what could be, and if you add the boiler in, three quarters to a million dollars overall in repairs that are ultimately needed anyway. So this is just the first step. We wanted to share it with you and with your approval, assuming we get it tonight. Mr. Gray and I will be going to the board of selectmen's meeting on Monday, just to update them on this process because it does require town managers' approval as well, the initial certification. If you remembered, the original application we submitted required the board of selectmen's endorsement, which Ms. Woodridge provided for us. So, so we share it with you and would seek your approval at least to move forward. There's no money, no financial commitment at this time at all, but would appreciate a vote from you to continue in this process. And obviously, we'll do analyses to be sure that in the end, we will actually reap these savings. And we'll do, and Mr. Gray and his successor, Mr. Barber, will do that with Mr. Fahy and I. But it's, it's too much money in savings to not pursue, we believe.
I, let me ask a question. I think I understand what you're saying about the money and the draft and everything.
Yeah.
But if I could ask, what is EMS work? I see it in several places on this.
Emergency management sys- Energy management.
Energy management system.
Energy management system work.
Okay.
Let me draw, I think.
Which takes in-
Yeah.
Which takes account for air conditioning, heating, ventilation, control works, the whole thing. Another thing too to consider too, if I could just bring up that the town of Auburn has committed themselves to be a green community. And therefore, we reap the benefits of money from grants. When we originally did this capital, that did not exist. So we were able to do quite a few projects last year, and we're not doing any this year, but the following year, we're going to reapply again. So the money is still out there for this type of work. So it's not like this type of work is going to go away because it's needed. But as Dr. Brunel said, it's the best value, you know, to move this forward to, to see if we can get half the funds for those two schools.
And if I could ask one more question? What do they need to do? I see a hundred thousand dollars for concessions and I, where is there a concession stand? Down at the high school in the football field or?
Yes, it's between the baseball field and the all purpose field. When the, when the high school was built, it was just, we found out shortly afterwards that we had lack of storage. So when that capital program came up for, for discussion for the following year, we felt five years out, we should probably put in for expansion of the concession stand for storage. Since that, I'm not saying that it's definitely needed, but we definitely do not have enough storage on that site. However, we do, we do our best with what we have. We improvise. We take advantage of every single space that we have. Recently, this past year, we refurbished the back of the bleachers and installed, I think we have eleven storage containers that have gates and locks. So now they can take all their track equipment, you know, some football equipment stored in there. So it's not saying that, you know, that we don't need that additional storage, which we do. But I guess if you had to weigh out the two, you know, just as I think there's always been a practice in the whole Auburn public schools that these principals do is they improvise and do the best they can with what they have.
Right.
And in this case, it's a perfect example.
So it's a lot of storage, not just selling more hot dogs?
Nothing to do with hot dogs, trust me. Nothing to do with hot dogs.
Okay.
Strictly for storage.
Okay.
And through the chair, the items that are designated here with the double asterisks, those are examples of ones really to demonstrate to MSBA that there is funding available. So a final determination has not yet been made of where we would take the funds, but we want, we need to show to them, yes, in fact, it has been appropriated, would require transfer, but some of these may, may be shifted.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
I would appreciate a motion on this, just to go forward, and that way then we'll go and share with the board of selectmen. Just a motion to have us continue through the accelerated repair process and to continue to provide updates to you.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next item, the medication designation, this is a form that needs to be signed by annually every two years and has been signed in all six years of my tenure, so three times. This will be the third. What it does basically is designates that with training by the nurse, that prescription medications, if needed, could be administered by an unlicensed but properly trained responsible adult. It does also include EpiPens and the distinctions that are noted there. So it is my recommendation that you vote to approve this. It would require the signature of Mr. Scobie as chair and myself.
Make a motion to approve the medical designation forms and have the superintendent and chairperson of the school committee sign them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just wanted to share briefly with you the asteroid program. We put that in place a couple of years ago with the middle school for grade six students out to school. It lost, it was no longer self-supporting. There were actually only two students in there. So we actually did close the program, so I just wanted to make you aware. But if there is expressed interest, we could certainly open it back up. But we do pay people to run that program and there was not money to do so. The need wasn't there, I would say.
The need wasn't there for the program?
The need was not there, no. We only ultimately ended up having two students in the end who utilized it.
So in your opinion, it would not be worthwhile to bring back?
At this point now, until, unless there's a need that's determined from families, we would not continue with it. Yep. The satellite and galaxy programs, and I think part of that has to do with the age of students. The satellite and galaxy have been in place for decades, quite honestly, and run and have large numbers of students. But I think that when students transition to the middle school, they're a little bit older. So they may not want to stay for a program like that, is my guess.
Are there any questions? Moving on.
The, wanted to make you aware, Mr. Bouvier has just come in from the third of three iPad presentations that were made, and we included a copy in your packet, all the, what will be next year's eighth and ninth graders. As you know, we're going to, each student will have an iPad to use throughout the day and actually to take home with them each day. It'll be a twenty-four seven and really make it a technological infused classroom in their lives, which students are already. But Mr. Bouvier is also here to give you an update. He and Mr. Gray have worked. Mr. Barber has been involved as well as me in terms of developing the lease for this. So he is here to provide you a brief update regarding, if you want to update us on the parent presentation, Mr. Bouvier, and then you and Mr. Gray can seek support to enter into this lease agreement to bring this great innovation to students in Auburn for grades eight and nine next year.
Sure.
Thank you. Like Dr. Brunel said, I just finished over at the high school and raised over here. So this was the third and final of our parent information sessions. And we ran through the presentation with all three groups of parents. We had a good turnout at all three. I don't think it was everybody. We still have some that we're going to have to address. But it was a good portion of our parents from our student body. And they were, all in all, very receptive to the program. We didn't have a single negative comment about it. We had some very good questions, all of which we felt we had very good answers for. So I think as the last piece of support that we didn't have up until this point, the parents, I think at this point, we can say that the parents are on board with our program, along with the students. And you made it perfectly clear through your votes in the past that you're on board with this program, our teachers, our administration. I feel very comfortable going into next year. We've got unilateral support in this program. So if you have any questions on that presentation, I'm happy to answer them. To be fair, I used most of what presentations I've already given to you to make this one. So you've seen it before, so just for the new members, so feel free.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bouvier?
I have one random question.
Sure.
How do you stop these kids from like FaceTiming each other in class and?
That's a good question. Yeah, and we have a good answer. We have a management system in place that every iPad has to belong to, that allows us full control over the iPad. We can turn on any feature that we want. So FaceTime being one of those that we will start the year off. And there are several others that will be off until we decide that they need to be on. So we have back control, granular control over every, every tool within the iPad.
Okay.
So we did present, Mr. Bouvier presented a memo regarding, because one of the questions that we had or items we had discussed back when we first proposed this was, is there ability to sustain this project moving forward? Now, we know with the new middle school coming online in the fall of 2015, that school will be fully equipped with iPads as part of the MSBA's project. So some of these iPads that we have will be able to shift to the high school. But this plan actually demonstrates that in the fifteen, sixteen school year, we'll, all students will have a one-to-one initiative of iPads from grade six through twelve. And this shows the financial obligation of what will be required, taking it from already, we've designated already in CIPs.
Do I have a motion to approve the leasing plan for the iPads?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And through the chair, I just want to thank Mr. Bouvier, Mr. Gray, Dr. Lozay, Mr. Hanfield, Mr. Gagnon. There have been meetings and a number of teams that you've assembled for this. The one-to-one digital learning team, it really is a very forward-thinking initiative that we're going to have in place in Auburn that we really should all be proud of. So thank you for your work on that. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I think it makes us the envy of towns around us, actually.
I would agree. I would agree.
We now move on to.
Park versus MCAS, okay. So the next item, as I had shared with you back in a couple of meetings ago, regarding the decision on Park versus MCAS. And you've probably been following in the newspaper, as have I and with local superintendents, that districts are making those determinations now, especially before the June thirtieth, so they can get what they would like. I did provide you some additional information in here, some items for consideration. But did want to let you know that as a leadership team, we really did give this great consideration. And as noted in the packet here with our pros and cons, the reality of it is, the MCAS test as it currently exists is going to be changing drastically because the MCAS is testing on the former curriculum frameworks for English, Language Arts and Math. We now have, and we shared this with you a couple of years ago, the Park test tests the students on their knowledge about the Common Core. That's what we're teaching our students, so we should be testing them on what it is that we're teaching them. Now, for full disclosure, there were technological challenges that happened this year that were not ours, our problem. They were the state's problem. The state is well aware of that and they are working on it. We believe as a leadership team that to expose our students to, and it is a rigorous, I would say probably a more rigorous test. It's a bit more challenging than MCAS. To expose our students to that in a year when the state has said we'll hold you harmless, if they're level one or level two, we're still going to remain level one and level two, we could improve. Our level two school could improve, but we can't go down from that score, from those levels. But I think that we shouldn't shy away from a more rigorous opportunity, especially if it's what we're teaching our students. We should be testing them on that. So I anticipate that it will, there'll be some challenges around it. But I think our students and our staff is up to it, and we will continue to make sure that the technology is in place. We don't need to decide now on technology. That can be a fall decision. But right now, our tentative decision is, let's go with Park and let's go with it on the technology base. That's how the test was built. I think it puts our students in the best position to be at the best advantage to do well with the test. So that is my recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I thought I had read that once we make that commitment on June thirtieth, it's a four-year commitment. Is that not?
Well, the issue is, we're going to make a commitment for next year. The Board of Elementary and Secondary Education is going to actually decide in the fall of 2015 whether they're going to adopt Park. And if they decide in the fall of 2015 to adopt Park, everybody's going to Park regardless. If they decide in the fall of 2015, they don't want to go with Park. And to me, all indications are we're going with Park. Our commissioner of education is leading this charge. Now, Department of Ed will not say what, it's a done deal yet, so we do have to wait until then. But if they decide in the fall of 2015 that we're not going to go with Park, what they've, what they've stated is that we'll revert to using some assessment, likely the MCAS, until they're able to redo the whole MCAS. Their term is they're going to sunset the MCAS. It's not testing what we're teaching right now. So this is a commitment for next year that we're making. And then the board's actually going to decide for us how we go forward.
At least we would have had exposure to it.
Exactly. That's the idea, is that we'll at least have exposed our students to it and without penalizing them in any way of doing it.
I agree with you, Mary Ellen. That's the best way to go because, you know, you're not going to get penalized or anything and you can get our students into it slowly instead of saying, you know, here you go, you got to do this.
And it counts, right.
It makes a big difference.
Yeah. And I did follow up, yeah. I did follow up with the Department of Ed. They are going to continue with MCAS alt, which is the alternative MCAS for our students who, whose IEPs require a very different type of program. So that's going to continue for them. They do have accommodations that are written in, and they'll be written into ed plans. But I just think it makes sense for us to, you know, if this is the direction that we're likely going, why not expose our students to it?
I would say that that was our theory from the beginning, and that's pretty much what we sold the town on, is that we were on board and we thought back then that this was actually going to come to fruition and it probably still will. And at the same time, it wouldn't make sense, as you said, to teach to the test that the frameworks don't align with.
Right, right.
So worst case scenario, if MCAS comes back, we wait until the frameworks come- So, worst-case scenario, if MCAS comes back, we wait until the frameworks come back to match the MCAS, and I don't think they would make that move until that was done. So, I would certainly approve.
Can I entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Yes, she did, yeah. Okay. The next item is, we've just updated for you retirees, resignations, and transfers. We continue to do, to do hiring, and we're bringing on board some, some great people, replacing some, some priceless individuals certainly, who have contributed a great deal to us, and we certainly thank them for it. Wanted to update you, I had shared with you a couple of meetings ago that the Southern Worcester County Collaborative is considering purchasing the buildings that they currently have, looking at an analysis of what we pay currently in rent and utilities, insurance costs, and what it would cost to pay a mortgage. We recently had a meeting this past Friday, and as a board, we agreed that we should delay this decision for now until we get more information regarding the conditions of the buildings, what repairs might be needed, and make sure that we had a full analysis done before we bring it back to you to make you aware. So, it's really been tabled for the time being, but I wanted to let you know that. The, we've addressed the master plan, but the tune-up and tool-up, the MASC trainings after the last meeting on the fourth, Mrs. Zottner did reach out to MASC. They are willing, we've included the flyer again for you. They're willing to work around your schedules as they have done in the past, and would even come out prior to a meeting, say at five forty-five or so at some point, either later this summer or this fall, depending on their schedule, if there was a workshop that you were interested in. So, you don't have to decide tonight, but if there are ones, we're happy to reach out and get that coordinated.
Any questions or any interest in trying to schedule something now, or would you like some time to look that over and think about it?
I'll probably think about it.
Yeah, I'd like to have some time too and think about it.
Okay. So, what we'll do is we'll put it on an upcoming agenda? Does that sound good? Okay.
It sounds good. And maybe, what was the last one that we had, or the last two that we had that were pretty similar? Was it the conflict of interest?
That was really more a general overview of roles and responsibilities, and the conflict of interest came as part of that too, yeah.
Have we, have we had that one? Or is that going to be part of this?
We've not had that one. We certainly could have that one, if we wanted to.
Well, I've sat, sat through it twice, but I think maybe the newer members might enjoy that.
Okay.
Um, I don't know about enjoy it, but I think.
I'm very good at sitting through things, whether I like them or not.
Well, that's good to know. That's good to know, or you may be getting a lot of things you don't like to do.
It goes with my teacher training, you know, yep.
So, we'll reach out and put that on the agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay, great.
And now move on to new business?
Yes, so under substitute rates, we have, we've provided here a comparison, and the rate of seventy dollars a day that Auburn is paying for teachers to come in has not been changed, as best we can tell, for approximately ten years. It is my recommendation that we adjust it. It's a slight adjustment to seventy-five dollars, but I think it puts us more in keeping, not with all of the area schools, but with some of those that we would be likely competing with that you can see here. So, it is my recommendation that we make this modest increase in substitute pay.
Make a motion to approve the increase in the rate of the daily substitutes from seventy to seventy-five dollars per day.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Any discussion? I would say that, first, first I would ask, do you think that seventy dollars, do you think five dollars is enough? Do you think perhaps we should go, go another five dollars? And I only say that because
Yes.
I know how difficult it is to get substitute teachers, and I know how taxing it can be on our regular faculty if we don't have that.
Yeah. I would think that if we went to eighty dollars a day, we would be in great shape in terms of getting subs, quite honestly. And it has, and we brought this at leadership team meetings, principals have brought this up fairly regularly, that we can't get subs to covering classes all the time, and it does create an issue, you know, for others. I was trying to be as conservative as possible. You did earlier this year, if you remember, increase for nurses to a hundred twenty-five dollars a day. And that had been at ninety, so that was a thirty-five dollar a day increase, which has helped somewhat. The challenge with nurses is that value does not even come close to competing with what they could earn if they worked in a hospital for a day.
Yeah, I'm all about
So, it still makes it challenging.
I'm all about being frugal, but if there's a small pool of substitutes out there, I, I'd hate to see them going next door to work when we could use them, because in the end, it's going to affect our children. And with that, I would just ask, off the top of your head, and I hate to do that to you.
Yeah.
How much do you figure we're paying in substitutes per year now? If, if you can, that's.
I would say probably, I'm going to guess eighty thousand dollars, somewhere in that vicinity, I would guess. If I may offer a, a thought, Mr. Scovia, to yours, perhaps what we could do is a tiered system, that if we did the eighty dollars a day, those would be for certified teachers? And that way, it would be an enticement for people who are certified to do that, and then the seventy-five for those who are, who are non.
Non-certified.
It might be a slight difference.
Yeah, I like that.
But, I think having the certified is, is certainly of benefit.
Absolutely, and I think, I think if we increase it to that, I think we may get some retirees stopping and seeing us, and those are usually the best.
Yeah.
I'll amend my motion to reflect the recommendations of the superintendent.
And your second?
Yeah.
Is there any more discussion?
I'd like to ask a question, yes. I think the tiered levels for certified and non-certified is important.
Yes.
Because I've been there, I've seen the person that came in and read a newspaper, and they weren't certified, they were simply an adult. You have a teacher, they want to work, or a certified person, I think that should be rewarded. I also personally think that a retiree should get more, an Auburn retiree should get more, and as Grafton does, and I know Milbury does, and a few other districts. You don't have Milbury on here, but I know Grafton does.
I certainly.
Because they come in, they know the school, they know the, they know the, they know the way it operates, and I think you might even find a few more retirees coming back if that knowledge and experience was rewarded.
Who know better than a retiree?
Right. Right. I've been trying to talk them into coming, but.
Well, I think, I think if we put a dollar figure on that, and we had a short discussion, Mr. Laurie may be willing to amend that motion one more time.
I'd like to hear what the other committee members think of that idea. I would assume you'd say eighty-five dollars? Is that what you're talking about?
Would that satisfy?
I've kind of lost track of where we went. We were eighty for
Seventy-five for non-certified.
Seventy-five for non-certified.
Eighty for certified.
Eighty for certified.
Eighty for certified.
And eighty-five for, I mean, yeah, eighty-five for retirees.
I think that would be a good place to start. We could always address this again next year.
Okay.
See if we actually.
Is, is the committee satisfied with that?
I'm satisfied with it.
Yeah, I think it would be beneficial to get retirees in, yeah.
Who are familiar with the district? We're talking about Auburn retirees?
Auburn retirees.
Okay, yeah.
Just Auburn retirees.
Just Auburn retirees.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that they're still certified too.
Right.
If you can remember that motion, Mr. Laurie.
I do. Hey, he started it.
I will amend my motion that we raise the rate from seventy to seventy-five for non-certified substitute teachers, eighty dollars a day for certified substitute teachers, and eighty-five dollars a day for retired certified Auburn school teachers.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And we are quickly winding down. I was actually with
I've been plugging for that since two thousand and ten, so.
From across the Commonwealth today, and no other school, in case anyone is wondering, was getting out later than Auburn, just so I know that I've been hearing that we are one of the last. Boston does not get out until next Wednesday, and Everett does not get out until Thursday, so, but the school year is quickly winding. And there's a school system that they were talking, it begins with a T, that doesn't get out till Friday. Till Friday, okay, good, so.
You guys are really plugging on that date, aren't you?
Yeah, I know. We're all feeling a little bad. Tomorrow was eighth grade graduation, which is always a wonderful event, and Monday is a half-day for students, and teachers will be back on Tuesday as well for a half-day.
Now move on to
That's all my report, yes.
All right, business and financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first thing is just to give you an update on procurement. This is the time of year when we start receiving results of the French River Education Collaborative bid process. I have included in your packet the results of the copy paper bid, which I'm pleased to report was the same amount as the previous year. We did receive late this afternoon, I believe Mrs. Moran received the office supply, custodial, and athletic bids, which we will bring to you at a future meeting. My understanding is that the prices are relatively in the same ballpark as they were in previous years, which is always good, since that's how we developed our budget. So, I'd ask the committee to approve the copper paper bid from the French River Education Collaborative for the fourteen, fifteen school year.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make that motion to approve the copper paper bid from the French River Education Collaborative for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next order of business is our year-to-date budget report. A month of June, I think we run this report, if not once a day, twice a day. You have the version from June twelfth. We recently ran the report today as well. We continue to monitor our expenses as we wind down to the end of the fiscal year, which is June thirtieth. After report, we are in stellar financial positions, and we're continuing to make very wise decision purchasing processes towards the end of the fiscal year, so that we will have what we need to end the year with and begin our new fiscal year fifteen budget on July first. If anybody has any questions on the year-to-date budget report.
No.
And in line with that, you have two sets of transfers. As I said, we are meeting almost on a regular basis to move money around into different budget items, so that we're able to then make purchases and make decisions as we get down to the end of the fiscal year. I provide these to you as part of the omnibus transfer that you gave approval for. Superintendent and I, as well as in concert with Mrs. Moran and the business office, go through each of these lines, making sure that we are transferring funds into those accounts where we're either seeing some shortfalls or we're redistributing funds in order to, once again, maximize that budget process, so that we're able to make purchases as we, once again, get to the end of the fiscal year. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the multitude of transfers that you have before you.
Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but before we leave business financial, is this your last meeting?
Maybe.
So, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Gray for his service this past school year, and thank you.
Thank you.
I would also, and not only that, but you just get chipped out of a cake.
Yeah.
Oh, that was for both. Oh, okay.
The half that's left is for him.
So, we don't have to clean this up.
Well, thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege. I think that, as I said, my decision to leave was one for a position that awards me for some of my experience and background, but I thoroughly enjoyed working here in Auburn. I think that it's a great school district. You obviously, as well, the school committee, administration, the superintendent, the leadership team, and the town as a whole value education and realize how important it is. So, it was a breath of fresh air coming from my previous district here to a district that truly appreciates education, and I hope to bring some of that goodwill and feeling to my new district, and I certainly hope that in the one year I've been here, I've contributed. And then I look forward to coming back for the middle school ribbon-cutting ceremony, so I can see what it looks like besides the pile of dirt that's outside. Thank you very much for having me for the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I wish you well.
Thank you.
We now move on to policies.
The second reading for the school committee reorg, or the organizational meeting, it is my recommendation that you approve it as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve it as submitted.
Second. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We do know.
Executive session? Okay, let's.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Good night, everyone. Good night.